2020 to order. And Sandy, at this time, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shipper?
Here.
Allen Bass? Allen Bass?
He's muted. He's holding his finger up and saying here, but he's muted.
Okay, Ingles?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Falcone?
Here.
Here.
Okay, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda, we do have an amended agenda this evening, if someone would like to make that motion.
This is Councilmember Shipper's. I will make a motion to approve the agenda to, let's see, add a resolution increasing the number of members of the Corridor Improvement Authority Board under adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
Allen Bass, for second.
Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shipper?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for the first public comment. Not seeing or hearing anyone, we'll close the public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting on October 5th, along with the minutes from our closed session on the 5th of October.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Allen Bass?
Shipper's, oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shipper?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, so this evening on our agenda, we do have a community spotlight. And this evening, we would like to be able to recognize the years of service of some of our volunteer boards and commission members. Normally, we like to get together once a year and bring the volunteers together for some social time and fellowship, but this year's a little bit different. So I'd like to be able to share this information with everyone tonight, and then also we'll finalize all of these things by providing a certificate to each of these volunteers. So this year, this year, we do have some five and even 35-year awards to be announced. The first one is Tom Olmstead, who has served on our cemetery board, and he being recognized for five years of service. Troy Knight is being recognized for his service on the zoning board of appeals, and he has been serving for 15 years. Sherry Alt has been serving on the same zoning board of appeals for 15 years as well. And Curtis Schultz is on the Downtown Development Authority, and he has been serving on that authority for 20 years. And then finally, Tim Coffey, who has also been serving on the Downtown Development Authority, and he has been serving on that authority for 35 years. And as always, a huge thank you to all of our volunteers that make up our different committees and authorities. It's what makes our city run as well as it does. And so I would like to just say thank you as part of that community spotlight.
Mayor, certainly, thank you to you as well. As of December of last year, you've had five years on council, and it's also noted in the communication of that milestone. I just wanted to say that for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. So, all of that being said, that takes us to the city manager's report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. And I also wanted to add that we have reached out to all of the volunteers that have hit milestones, and we will be letting them know when to come in to pick up their certificates. So again, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The first item under the manager's report this evening is with respect to our police rifle replacement program. Recently, we requested bids to replace the current rifles deployed in departmental operations and to purchase additional equipment to be assigned to each officer in the department. Bids came in from three different vendors: Keisler Police Supply, CMP distributors, and Michigan Police Equipment Company. Keisler, if I'm saying it right, came in with the lowest bid at $19,916.50. However, they did not bid on one of the items in the specifications, which is a specific type of full-frame rifle made by Sig Sauer versus the smaller frame rifle that they sell that's made by a company called Springfield. As such, the recommendation being made this evening would be to award the purchase of rifles and equipment to both Keisler Police Supply and CMP distributors, because CMP distributors does provide for the different piece of equipment that the Keisler dealer doesn't. As you'll see in the communication, the department is looking for an award tonight of the $19,600, excuse me, $19,916.50, and to CMP distributors in an amount of $1,698. Funds are available in the police department budget for this purchase in this fiscal year. Additionally, in accordance with our COVID-19 financial response plan, these funds were not frozen for the police department or the fire department. Specifically, as the plan advises, the response plan maintains police and fire-related projects because deferring these purchases could negatively impact the city's ability to respond to public safety emergencies with the most up-to-date tools available. The purchase price, I will advise, is slightly higher than what the budgeted amount was. The budgeted amount for the purchase was $15,000, but again, we do have the funds available for the total purchase price, which would be $21,614.50. I'm going to now defer to our Public Safety Director, Adam Ajeckka, just to talk a little bit about the purpose of having these tools in the police department. Adam?
Thank you, Marcus. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I guess I'll go back. When I started, after inventorying some of the equipment, I noticed some shortfalls that we may have had, and some changes that I felt was important to make. One of those things was we had some equipment in our possession from the RISO program that I did not feel the need to continue to keep. Those items were returned. I also identified that our patrol rifles were aged, over 10 years old. When you do the training and the MCOS qualifications, certain things can go wrong with those rifles. You have the ability of shooting out the rifling inside the barrels. That can cause accuracy issues. Basically, I want to kind of go over this real quick. Handguns are typically a defensive tool, allowing accuracy up to about 25. In today's day and age, and what we're seeing across the country, is some pretty disturbing trends, such as active shooters in schools, where the yardage would definitely exceed 25 yards. Rifles are typically just deployed for threats where potential ranges are exceeding that 25 yards, such as active shooters in the schools, wooded trains, open fields, barricaded suspects in residences. Patrol rifles are definitely more accurate than the handguns, and they're deployed across the nation throughout law enforcement. This is actually just a housekeeping. We're getting rid of the old aged equipment, and we're replacing it with newer, more modern, up-to-date equipment. Over time, due to training and using the rifles every year out on the range, the rifling can wear out, the springs can stretch and break, internal parts become worn and diminished. And this program actually allows the officers to be individually assigned their own rifle owned by the city. These are semi-automatic patrol rifles. They do not have the capability of going into full auto, which is what the officers are trained at the academy to utilize and here at Cadillac Police Department. If anybody has any questions, I'm open for answering those.
Adam, Allen Bass here. How many years can we get out of these rifles? What do you think?
Well, so if we're using, you know, if we're shooting 1,000 rounds a year in a training, that means we're dumping 10,000 rounds down the barrel. Depending, they've come a long way. There's the chrome line barrels. There's some different treatments that they put in the barrels to get longer-lasting barrels, but I would say 10 years would probably be a good time to look at replacing those. We also have two members that are part of Northern Michigan Mutual Aid, and I'm going to assume that, and I'm not just going to assume, I know that when they go out and train, they're putting several thousand rounds through those barrels, additionally on top of, you know, the MCOS qualifications for the other officers.
1,700 seems like a lot for a rifle, but it's a pretty high-tech piece of equipment, isn't it?
Yeah, so this is not just the rifles, it's also the optics and slings. It's all of the accessories that come along with them. Part of the issue that you run into with the patrol rifles that I've seen in my experience, by the way, let me kind of just give you a background. I was the firearms instructor for the City of Marshall. I've been through MSP's firearm instructor school. I'm very well-versed with the firearms. But what I'll say is that the issues that you can run into is everybody gets sighted in on the optics, whether it be iron sights, or even scopes, or red dots, to their person and their shooting position, their platform. A lot of times, when they're, if they're not assigned to the individual officers, they go out to the range, they'll adjust for themselves, and that may throw off the accuracy for the next officer to pick up that rifle. So by issuing the rifles to the individual officers, we're guaranteeing that they're going to maintain the rifle, they're going to keep the optics set up for that individual officer, and that's how it's going to be deployed when they're working.
And they're stored in the police station?
Correct. They'll be maintained at the police department? Yes, and they'll be taken with them on patrol.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If there's no more discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to award the purchase of police rifles to Keisler Police Supply in the amount of $19,960.50, and CMP distributors in the amount of $1,698. Allen Bass?
I'll support. This is Ingles.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shipper?
Yes.
Allen Bass? Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Councilmember Shipper, is your okay over there?
I get a new device, you know, where do you unmute on the new device? So, I got it.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is regarding the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class Project Concepts. I don't know how many concepts the leadership class is going to be contemplating, however, there are a couple of concepts that are before them currently. And before the class gets too far down the road, I wanted to take a moment and just brief the city council and frankly, get support. Otherwise, we'll pull them. The one concept in front of the class currently is one that the Downtown Development Authority, or our DVA, has been sort of working on off and on again over the last few years, and that's with respect to the potential future installation of what they're calling Protected Crosswalks. They would be within the Mitchell Street right-of-way, one north of Scruse Street, one south of Bead Street. This is a project that actually MDOT brought to our attention a number of years ago, and mentioned that there may be some potential funding even to help make it work. And nothing ever really materialized from that. It would certainly still require some form of local support, most likely in the form of funding. And so the thought was, well, if we could try to package something together, maybe there would be the ability of moving it forward. And as you'll see in the communication, there's conceptual rendering of the location of it, or what it is, I should say, plus an actual picture of exactly what these things are as they live currently in Detroit, right across from Little Caesars Arena. Another project that the leadership class also has sort of in their basket to look at includes a potential installation of a new roof over the Shea Locomotive in the city park. This is a project also that has been talked about from time to time. There's, I believe they're anonymous currently, potential donors that are looking at maybe investing and helping to pay to re-roof that structure. And the thought would be perhaps if that's something that the leadership class would like to be able to help get behind, that that could be a good opportunity. Another project that's not in their hopper, but is one that was contemplated several years ago, was actually helping to fundraise for the Trailhead, the White Pine Trailhead project. And even though it's not in the communication, I wanted to mention that perhaps as council considers this this evening, to add into the recommendation, maybe just some small verbiage to also include that project, should that one come up and be something that they want to maybe focus on as well. That way, we also have it on the record in a sense that council would be supportive. And that's it. John Wallace, our development director, is on the line, and I believe Caitlin Baird with the chamber is also on the line, but I don't have anything further to add at this time.
This is Councilmember King. The one project with the Protected Crosswalks on Mitchell is one that worries me because I remember the conversations before about the effect that would have on plowing in the winter, and possible obstruction that's added to our bump outs, which cause a challenge already for our plowing. I'm all in favor of identifying crosswalks and giving pedestrians a right-of-way, but I'm not sure I want to support a project that would actually try to put a boulevard or another obstruction on Mitchell.
The, and you might be right on that, Councilmember. I will advise that Public Works is aware, and they haven't raised any issues, to my knowledge, about it from an operational perspective.
No one thought the bump outs would be a problem either, and those have been a real challenge. Those weren't identified ahead of time.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
Um, I think I would agree with Steve on the road thing, actually. I think I'd like to make a motion slightly changing our support here for White Pine Trailhead donations and for the roof over the Shea, should the leadership class choose one of those for the project?
I would support that motion. This is Steve King.
Councilmember Shipper?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, moving right along, and thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Just a brief COVID-19 update tonight. As of a little bit earlier this afternoon, the District Health Department Number 10 has reported a total of 2,047 cases for their area that they represent. Currently, 30 total deaths. There are 128 positive cases in Wexford County currently, with a total of four deaths. Within the District 10 region, there's been 14, 141 total recoveries, with 98 being attributed to Wexford County. And as always, please visit www.dhd10.org for many more details that they have and graphs. It's pretty interesting how they're tracking everything. So that ends the city manager's report this evening.
Marcus, might you also want to share what was decided in Lansing about virtual meetings?
They're allowed. So I think that's a great update. I know that there was some conversation at our last city council meeting that the city attorney helped to facilitate. And since then, the governor, I believe just late last week, signed into law changes to the Open Meetings Act that does allow through the end of the calendar year, public bodies to continue to meet in this full manner. And that allows through the following year for people to still join virtually if they meet certain criteria. I don't have that list in front of me, and I know that the city attorney is on the line. I'm not sure if he has that in front of him either. But unless something changes, my assumption is that we would be meeting again in January in person, unless somebody needs to meet remotely. That will pose perhaps a little bit of a complication because it'll require some kind of a hybrid manner, but you could call in, which might be easier. And we still have talked about maybe even trying to meet yet in the farmer's market pending if we're ready to roll with some of the Trailhead updates entering meeting in November. But whether or not we have that information ready, and whether or not the weather will allow us to do that are still a couple of questions that are up in the air. Mike, were you going to say something?
I was just going to add that, so the governor signed Senate Bill 1108 late Friday afternoon. What the amendments do is they make the changes to the Open Meetings Act retroactive, back to middle of March. And then through the end of this calendar year, the city public bodies can meet for any reason, by way of video conference or telephone conference, anything that is two-way transmission to allow the public to participate. After January 1st of 2020, those circumstances are narrowed in terms of attending meetings, and those are limited to military duty, a medical condition, or a statewide or local state of emergency or disaster. So, medical condition is defined under the act. What's unclear to me is, I suppose, whether or not a medical condition could be, say, for example, inclusion within a vulnerable, say, age group, or somebody with underlying medical conditions that would put them at risk for COVID. So I think some of those issues we're going to have to work our way through. But I will give you another important thing I think is important. I didn't believe that meeting virtually under the Open Meetings Act was a violation of the act to begin with. Nonetheless, because of the manner in which the amendments were made, that unless you have, you're on leave for, say, military duty, or you have a medical condition, or there's a statewide or local state of emergency or disaster, you are now precluded from attending a meeting by virtual means. So, for example, if you happen to be out of state, say, on vacation, you can no longer participate in an electronic meeting from a remote location unless you qualify for one of those categories. So, and that is a change, certainly to the act. So just keep that in mind. We'll probably be working through those issues later this year, as well into next, to see what is going on. So, for instance, there are local states of emergency that are still declared throughout regions of the state related to COVID. Some of my clients have declared local emergencies. So those would allow the public bodies to continue to meet by electronic means. And, you know, whatever you may think, certainly in-person meeting is better than video, but I can make a pretty good argument as well that the virtual meetings have actually increased public participation in many instances as well. So, you know, the whole issue, hopefully, will get resolved soon, but it may be a while before we get back together. And I think we're going to have to play it by ear with cases that are on the rise and what that means for individual, not only council members, but members of the public as well.
I have a question. I was listening to the MML thing this morning, and then reading through the bill. What about the part where we have to announce, like, where we're at? Does that part not take effect yet? Were we supposed to have done that at the start of this meeting?
No. So because you can meet for any purpose up until the end of the calendar year, I read that provision that only on a going-forward basis, under one of those qualifying conditions where you may have to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
So, Mike, that would be after January 1, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Mike, if you're still there, I think we're at the point now where we're going to be having council consider the setting of the public hearings in regard to both the recreational and medical marijuana-related tweaks to the ordinance. If you could perhaps in one sort of fell swoop, give that quick update regarding the timing and the ability of setting the clock for the other categories for applications?
Sure. So we've provided to the city two resolutions, one amending or setting a public hearing for proposed recreational marijuana amendments to your existing ordinance, the other for the medical. Both of them do the same thing. And so these amendments were necessary for two reasons, really. The first and more important, I suppose, was to extend the time for submitting paperwork for the establishment and specific step of the application for a state operating license to LARA. LARA changed its processes somewhat during the time period during which we considered and adopted the city's ordinances until now. And so LARA is not going to accept applications until the premises are ready to be occupied. So what this proposed amendment would do would be to change the timeline. The original timeline provided for 30 days. That is, 30 days after the city awarded conditional authorization, the applicant had to submit their Step 2 application to LARA. But because LARA changed the manner in which But because LARA changed the manner in which they're receiving those, they won't even accept those Step 2 applications, which would mean the applicant would run afoul of that 30-day limitation under our ordinance. What the proposed amendment will do is to extend that to be 60 days after receipt of the certificate of occupancy for the establishment, then they would have to file for that Step 2 application process with LARA. And in that case, there should not be a timing issue absent any other changes by the state. The second amendment is to allow the city manager to periodically and administratively open a new receipt period and establish deadlines for applications, but only for those establishments for which licenses remain available. A good example of that is Growers, Grower License. The city did not have any applications for Growers License, and therefore it remains unfilled. And so we would, without this amendment, we would have to come back to City Council to get that reopened. And so this is going to ease that process by allowing the city manager administratively to open up that application acceptance process for a period of not less than 30 days, so that you can gauge the interest in filling those unfilled licenses that remain at the city. So the amendment is the same in both, but they're different ordinances, so they're proposed in two different resolutions and ordinance amendments.
Does anyone have any questions? And if not, would someone like to make a motion?
As Councilmember Shippers, that makes a lot of sense. I will make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce ordinance to amend Section 10-2 of Chapter 10 of this Cadillac City Code, recreational marijuana establishments, and set a public hearing for November 16.
I would second that. Ellen Bass?
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The next item is the same with respect to what you just heard the City Attorney present on. This one is for medical marijuana, and the request is to set the public hearing accordingly for, again, your next meeting, Monday, November 16.
Councilmember Shippers, again, I will make the motion to adopt resolution to introduce ordinance to amend Section 10-3 of Chapter 10 of the Cadillac City Code, Medical Marijuana Facilities, and set a public hearing for November 16, 2020.
Ellen Bass, second that.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Moving along to the next section of agenda under adoption of ordinances and resolutions, we have a couple that includes the one that was added earlier this evening. The first one is with respect to consideration of a MDOT contract. This is a contract for Phase 2 construction of Chestnut Street. MDOT facilitates essentially the entire process, all the bidding and contracting for the project, and the utilization of the Small Urban Grant that the city received to help pay for the project. Our city engineer is on, as well as our finance director, if there are any VPL questions. This, I believe, is the last step that council would be involved in with regard to the future Phase 2 construction that should be, I believe, starting sometime later this summer after school. That's out of '21.
I know that we, I know this, but I'm not sure everybody is aware, but this is why we were waiting to finish the rest of Chestnut Street, right? I know, Owen, if you could just highlight that that quick for a couple of seconds about what we did last year and how we got the money now for the rest of it, so we didn't have to wait.
Yeah, that's correct. So we were looking at having to wait until next summer to do the whole thing, and we didn't want to go another winter with the east portion was the worst. And so we, in consult with with our engineer, we're confident that we could split it up into two parts and do the first part now so that we wouldn't have to face another winter and then pothole season in the spring with the worst east section of Chestnut. So we have that done now, obviously. And then the remainder of it is Colfax down to Leeson. And that, we did, in fact, get within a couple thousand dollars of maximizing those grant funds of $375. Typically, there's an add or two that I think will bring us right up into using 100% of the grant dollars. So we did it in two phases so that we could get the worst part done quick. And this is the final phase where we can use 100% of the grant funds, hopefully $375,000. Right now, the contract says $359,000. And that gives us some flex if there's some additional costs. So Marcus pointed out real quick, too, that this is not one that we bid out and that we award. This would be council's only action on the project because it's an MDOT contract. What we have to do is approve the contract and assign our engineer to work on the project, but they handle the bidding award and all of the contract stuff with the actual contractor.
Thank you, Owen. Any questions?
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the, oh, wait, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving MDOT contract 20-5387 for Chestnut Street project.
I'll second that. Ellen Bass?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The final item under this section has to deal with the item that we added this afternoon. And it's the request to consider a resolution increasing the number of members from eight to nine on the Corridor Improvement Authority Board for Cadillac West. City Attorney and I were talking about this the other day. Neither one of us are really quite sure how we ended up with an even number of members. It may have had something to do possibly with the way the original resolution was drafted, where it refers to the mayor or her designee, and then I think it even said in parentheses, possibly city manager. And maybe it was double-counted or something, and we thought we ended up with an odd number, but in reality, we didn't. We ended up with an even number. So this evening, we're looking at resolving that. We actually have somebody that's also indicated some interest as well, so I would anticipate possibly having an application for consideration at your next meeting in November accordingly, and then we'll actually have a full nine-member board. The action this evening would, again, in short, increase it from eight to nine and would allow for the ability for an additional member to be on the board that either lives within the area or within a half-mile of the corridor, as that classification already currently exists.
All right, that makes sense, too. Should I make a motion, or is that okay? All right, so I will make a motion to adopt the resolution increasing the number of members to the Corridor Improvement Authority Board.
I'll second that. Ellen Bass?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, so this evening in our packet, we do have the minutes of the last Historic District Commission meeting, and that was held in July. And at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment this evening. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order, if anyone has anything this evening.
Councilmember Shippers, I do. I would just like to, I understand that Joy Vandri is taking a position other than heading up the Visitors Bureau, and I would just like to thank her for all her years of service and for the excellent job that she's done with the Visitors Bureau and promoting our beautiful city and helping keep all the wonderful things that we do in the eyes of the public. So thank you, Joy, and good luck. We're sorry to lose you, and they're lucky to gain you.
I would agree with that. And also with Halloween coming up, I hope everyone has a safe Halloween. You know, this, wear your masks, or this mask. Well, you know, you come to this guy's door without a mask on, grumpy old man's not giving you any candy.
There you go.
I finally know who you are, you mask-bury.
You see a guy on a bike wearing that hat, wearing that. Anyway, have a good Halloween, young people. Only on once. Thank you.
Marcus, do you want to talk about Halloween? I know you put out a press thing about it, but do you want to talk about Halloween protocol for folks?
Sure, if you give me a moment, I'll pull up.
Sorry, I put you on the spot.
It's okay. I just need, going to our website.
Oh, you can find it on the website?
It's on our website, right under News and Announcements. It's also on our Facebook site as well. Halloween 2020 Guidelines and Guidance. And it is a link that you would click that then takes you to a landing page with another link that'll take you to a place where you could view the three-page document, or you can download it into Adobe or print it. Our guidelines have basically stayed the same as they've been over the last number of years. I think it's important to, first of all, mention that the city is not in, the city doesn't doesn't organize or pick a date or set anything official. Halloween is on October 31st every year, and whether that's a Monday, Tuesday, or a Friday or Saturday, I mean, Halloween is on Halloween. These are just simple, you know, sort of common sense tips and tricks for trick-or-treaters and for parents and guardians. And it looks like, Owen, I think, just put that on the website, so on our meeting site, so thank you. We were kindly asking for trick-or-treaters to perhaps trick-or-treat between 4:00 and 8:00 p.m. And then this year, we have also included, starting on the second page, Owen, if you could just scroll down, the guidance from our District Health Department Number 10 that includes essentially their tips in the age of COVID-19 about what you should be doing as a trick-or-treater. And so it's all, I think, really easily laid out. It's bullet pointed, as you can see. And we have issued a release, you know, to all the media, and they're encouraging people to take a look at this before they head out this year. Hopefully, the weather will hold, and we'll have some good fun.
I got to give Mike credit for that, Marcus. Mike was doing that.
Doing what? Oh, home here?
Yeah, yeah.
Listen, I was a little concerned about the tips when you read the tips for homeowners on Halloween, and it starts out with, use duct tape. Yeah, sorry, the rest of that is to mark six-foot lines.
So.
All right, thank you for sharing that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Is there anything else this evening? If not, thank you, everyone. And we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.